I would like to call the regular meeting of the Foxborough School Committee of Foxborough to order. It's 7:05. Our agenda this evening will be visitors, approval of minutes, teaching and learning highlights, Foxborough High School Congress, Faces 2012-2013 awards, approval of the 2013-2014 school calendar, results and analysis of the 2012 bullying survey for middle and high school students, NIASC update, FY '14 budget, other matters, and then we will be going into executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiating strategies with non-union personnel, extended day services employees, and to discuss school security. The committee will not return to open session after that executive session. Happy New Year, everyone. Do we have any visitors who would like to speak? Okay, we'll move to approval of minutes. Any additions or corrections? All in favor? Teaching and learning highlights, Foxborough High School Congress, would you like to...
I would love to do a little... Waiting for my person, but as we always put times in the agendas, but then we always run a little bit early for the first item, so that's just the way it is. So I'm sure that Mr. Carroll will be here shortly, but I'd love to welcome Mr. Tom Murray, who's our department head for social studies here at Foxborough High School, and Matt Carroll will be here, who's in the social studies department, Kristin Durico, who's also in the social studies department. And I'm really thrilled to have one of our high school students here, Wes Young. Thank you for coming. It's a lot for kids who have a lot to do. I'm sure you have homework and things to do at home, but this is really important. Or maybe not. One of the reasons we put this on the teaching and learning highlights for this particular meeting is because it was recent and I had the great pleasure to show up at the high school. I knew the Congress was going on. I had been there another few years when they ran the Congress. I've always been impressed by it. And so I went back again and spent about 45 minutes watching the Congress. And it's just such an unbelievably wonderful and exciting learning opportunity. It's not only about government and how government works, but it really asks the kids to step forward and take leadership in terms of what they know about government and how it works and how bills move forward. It's so impressive and, as I said to us, also with a touch of humor in there. Such an unbelievably worthwhile activity that I knew it had to be a teaching and learning highlight. So I'll let Mr. Murray explain to you a little bit of the background and then we'll go from there.
Sure. As a department, we get to bring history alive. We have an opportunity for kids. We've gotten away from a lot of the lecture-based courses themselves, and instead of that, we do a lot of hands-on learning. We use a lot of curriculum from History Alive, and our teachers have the opportunity to really bring history to life for our students. This is an incredibly interactive activity. I have the pleasure to teach with some awesome teachers, okay? And what they're able to do for our students here at Foxborough High School is amazing. I'm going to turn it over to Kristin, and she's going to talk about this particular program itself.
Hi.
Hi.
The way in which we introduced this and front-loaded this activity was the students were given from just constitutional information. So they were started with what Article 1 says, Article 2, all the way through to the amendments, and what the Bill of Rights means, and what all these areas are going to do for our government. From there, they take a bar exam, a fake bar exam, and they have to prove their competency in the Constitution and how well they've mastered that material, looking at the constitutional information. Once they've passed the bar exam, they are given scenarios. How as lawyers would they then be able to give information to a client? So we take a couple days looking at these various scenarios where they have to prove where it comes from in the Constitution, and then from there, say why? What in the Constitution does it...where is it sort of shown in the Constitution? That then culminates in the congressional simulation, and I think that you may have the material from that. We give them rules, we give them procedures, they are assigned various roles. They're either in the House of Representatives or they're in the Senate, and we tried to make it mathematically legitimate, so there were fewer students in the Senate, more students in the House of Representatives. Wes served as the House Minority Leader and was assisting with the Speaker of the House. They were broken down into committees. We created four committees. And as we do the congressional simulation, it's relevant to their class. It's not laws within the society. It's laws that they create and make within that simulation are those that we will grant them as privileges or as, you know, addendums to our class rules. So they were able to create bills and laws and then debate them, discuss them, and bring them hopefully to fruition. Mr. Delaney served as our president, and he was able to veto the laws as he saw fit using...
He must have played that role very well.
He enjoyed it. Yes, he did like that. So he did veto some of their laws, but they did...they were able to pass a few of the laws into being. So it was, for me, it was great fun to watch them at the beginning of the segment. They were very enthusiastic. They were all getting up there and talking, and after the two hours that we afforded them time to work on this, you could see them intellectually exhausted. They just had really worked so hard at discussing, debating, thinking about the scenarios, thinking about the alternative opportunities for these various bills. So it was a very fun activity. Would you like to add on to what you did?
Yeah. Yeah, it was a very fun activity. It kind of showed how chaotic it could be with all the people trying to get their attention, especially as the House Minority Leader. We did get bills passed, such as watching student news every morning in Mr. Carroll's class, and of course, some were vetoed, but we got some passed.
I thought it was great, Wes, how some of the students, when they were...it was obvious how hard they worked to get their bills passed. Like you said, getting people's attention, getting the floor to listen when you were, you know, proposing the argument. But then when some of the bills were vetoed, and some were not, you know, when they were vetoed, the frustration. I mean, it's just like you watch on TV with the news when Congress is in session, to be honest.
Yeah, exactly.
Like, you can't believe you worked that hard, and then something got vetoed. So I was kind of wondering, what was the end result? Were the students happy with how many bills they were successfully able to pass, or...
Yeah, and generally, we were pretty happy. I mean, a lot of people, since they wrote their own bills, they were trying to get their own in, and so people were coming up, trying to like push you to get their own bill passed. But the bills we got passed were...we probably got three or four passed, and especially in the beginning, so that made everyone happy. Even though some of them got rejected, everyone was still overall pretty happy about it.
I thought you had a pretty good lead...I thought you had a good lead number passed, from my view.
Yeah, it was...I was surprised.
Did you want to talk about the fiscal club?
No, I was disappointed that they didn't solve the fiscal club.
No, it wasn't a good idea.
Yeah, it was great.
They probably had some good ideas about it, though.
I had a...welcome. We apologize in the audience. You weren't on for now the five minutes, but we do sometimes run the early part of the meeting a little bit early, so it's on us.
The trains are not your fault.
The one day, I had to pick up my wife.
It's okay, we can...we can start it.
So I apologize for coming in late, but I just want to thank you for inviting us. This was an idea that I had done in the past with Ryan Walensky in the Special Ed Department, and it's kind of grown a little bit. And so this year, I figured...I did it last year on my own in 122, and I figured the more people, the better. So I decided to call in Kristin, and her class start period's kind of measured up. And so we were able to get into 122. It's part of a...it's a multi-tiered assignment. The first assignment is...the first assignment with the law...
Mr. Live, I know, bar exam.
The bar exam, all right. So they did the bar exam, and it worked out really well. So I was really excited.
So they do have in their packet that they hand out a bill proposal, you know, how they...what the students were giving us a lot in their procedures. What do you think was the most challenging thing for the students? Which part?
I would have to say it was the control, the aspect of order and control, and getting their ideas moved and getting everything in a flow. I know our Speaker of the House, and you were working very closely with them, getting the bills in order, getting people's voices heard. I think that was most challenging to them. What would you say?
I think the hardest part was building the buildup, the lead-up to it. So something so complex that many people don't even today really quite have a grasp on. We could bring it down to a 10th grade level, so it would have meaning. And that's what was so exciting about it at the end of it, the breakdown questions that we gave that related to it. The breakdown questions we asked, you know, what did you think? What was your impression of the lawmaking process? You know, we don't have to go over the answers, but I do remember that later that day, I ran into a student who I had, and I asked him at lunch, I said, you know, "What'd you think of the activity?" He goes, "Mr. Carroll, I learned two things. Number one, I learned I have a headache. And number two, I learned why nothing ever really...why nothing really ever happens." And to me, that was...but the big...it was proof that we cleared the biggest hurdle, was that people could kind of walk away knowing, you know, why, you know, why is stuff on TV night in, night out? Why is this a big deal? So that was...I was most proud of that it got kind of...we were able to speak, make a complex idea relevant.
Absolutely did that. I thought it was fascinating to watch the kids do it from above, because it was exactly like you see on TV. There were sidebars of groups, small groups, trying to get support for their bill, but people were paying attention to something else. There was two-minute warning, "Hey, we only have two more minutes," which translates sometimes in the government into two more weeks, you know, to get, "We still have one or two more bills to do here, we only have two minutes, everybody has to reassemble." I mean, and it was general, you know, like you said, getting people's attention. I thought it was absolutely wonderful.
It was great, because the students...
Impressive.
We were all exhausted at the end of two periods, which was, once again, it was great to see the students and see how tiring it really is.
My favorite part at the end was some...
I think Foxborough has such a long line of our model Congresses and what we've gone through over the years. Mr. Pearlmutter was my teacher in high school, and I know how he would motivate us at that point. My kids had bond bridges. And I think you learn your love for politics and what you need to go through. I know when I went through my nurse practitioner program, they were trying to pass a bill for nurses in the expanded role. And it was amazing when we all went into the State House to listen to forums and speeches, and it just...it wasn't unnerving to you, because you knew about it, you understood it. And I think...I can remember my mother and my youngest son Frankie used to sit down and have discussions about politics all the time, and my mom used to say, "It's so nice to hear someone who understands politics, and how did you learn about this?" I said, "Well, his love of it started when he was in high school, Mom." And they would sit and have great conversations on both sides. So I think, you know, what we offer here at Foxborough is incredible, and it just has grown and grown over the years, and this is just another example of it. And, you know, you're all a credit to us, because this is where they get their love for politics and understand how bills are passed and not passed, and how we're hung up, and what goes on. But I think we've had a long tradition here in Foxborough when it comes to politics and being involved in the courses we offer. To credit to all...
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Is this something you plan to continue going forward next year, or continue to tweak?
This is...at the end of every school year, we kind of get to figure out what classes we, you know, will be our preference. For me, I've always done the world history since I've been here, and then I kind of alternate back and forth between the US I, which is the juniors, and the US II, which is the freshmen. And if this is something I could keep on doing, and that was great, because I saw it kind of grow from the last few years I've done it.
Yeah.
And in my head, I was like, "Oh, wow, this can be our thing. If we can, you know, make this something bigger and better, keep adding to it."
Well, no, I for one would love to see it. Political science was my major in college, and I'm a lawyer, so congratulations on passing a bar exam. That's not easy. But I think this is...
There's twenty questions.
Yeah, well...
They could take more than that.
No, I think it's fabulous, and I love that the kids are getting the exposure of this. I agree with Martha and everything she said, too.
We debriefed afterwards, and we did talk about even changing the format of some of their...we were talking about like changing the committee format, because they didn't have a lot of time to sort of committee work and work on the bills and the revisions of the bills because of the time that was allotted to them. So we had talked about maybe next year, reformatting it a little bit so that they have more small group work and then come into the larger group. And if we're able to collaborate our classes again, I think we'd like to change some of the form.
I hope it works out for you. It sounds like a fabulous program.
It was fun.
How many students did you have involved?
I have 24, and mine were college prep students, and you have...
I had 26 honor students. So it really worked out great. We divided them up percentage-wise between House and the Senate. So the Senate only, I think, had nine kids, which percentage...that's the way it worked out. And so I was going to add too, before we probably wrap up. One of the bills that got passed in our classes was the student news, which I know you've always done, and I've never used that in my practice. So now that's something I'm doing, I'm being, you know, I'm honoring what they got passed. And I've had a couple students kind of call me on that. "Mr. Carroll, we do the student news." They were smart enough to do that on the day we had a quiz or a test, but we did. We ended up saving it at the end. It wasn't in the State House until we went in the class. It worked out...it worked out really well.
You're breaking the law now.
Yeah, it's funny how good their memories are when it's a law day.
They are. That's great. Well, I can honestly say our son's love of politics and the law started in your department as well, so...I don't know, Wes, I don't know if you're looking forward to a political career, or if that just killed it, but good for you.
Interesting.
It is. A lot of hard work, but worth it. Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Good luck with semester exams.
Thank you. The awards, Mrs. Davis and Mrs. Freeman. And we have Mrs. Murphy. And Mrs. Murphy, so welcome. Welcome to the guest table.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. I don't know, Mr. Freeman, you're going to be here tonight?
Oh, hi, Jeff.
You have enough chairs?
Yes, we do.
That'd be great.
While they're getting set up, as everybody knows, and hopefully all of the public knows, Faces, Foxborough Community Enriching Schools, is our local educational foundation that began several years ago, and we've been honestly just really blessed and grateful to have them do their volunteer services, raising money and awarding grants to our Foxborough teachers for the past many years. So this year is no less exciting than other years, perhaps maybe even a little more so. So I'm going to turn it over to the Faces board.
Great.
Ms. Freeman, Ms. Davis, Mrs. Murphy, and let you announce what you decided to do for the 2013...
Thank you. Thank you. Well, it's great to be here. Happy New Year, everyone. It's wonderful to be amongst friends and colleagues again. My name's Angela Davis, and I'm here with a few of our colleagues, Kathleen Murphy, and Christine Igo Freeman, and Jimmy Freeman. And it's our pleasure to be here once again and be able to do this work for the children in the Foxborough Public Schools. I wanted to just go through who the other members of Faces are that aren't with us yet. I think they're headed here, it'll be great if they can join us. Debbie Coniff. We also have Diana Griffin, and Jess Stevenson, and my better half, Michael Davis. So just to reintroduce the mission of Faces, it continues to be dedicated to the enhancement of student achievement and student development in the Foxborough Public Schools by funding seed money to educational initiatives and innovative methods of learning put forward by the faculty in our school system. In the five years that we've spent reviewing grant applications, Faces remains dedicated to innovative, cutting-edge proposals that more deeply engage student learning versus funding the rollout of widely accepted standards and technology, the things that already exist within the current structure. The faculty applications have been very thoughtful and have certainly demonstrated the caliber of teachers we have here, once again in Foxborough. They continue to display the caring and the investment that they have in the community. We also wanted to take this time, before Christine reads off the grants, to acknowledge and thank all the people who live in town that continually are generous and supportive of their time and open their wallets to help Faces do this work. We don't do this work on our own. It's "we," but it's a larger, more community-oriented organization. And through that, the sponsors, through the years that we've had, have worked very hard to support us financially, making these events and fundraisers a huge success. So we know that we have a very special community here and a very special school system, and each of you is to be thanked as well for your leadership and what you do. So without further ado, I'm going to hand it over to Christine Igo. And I'm Angela Davis, I don't know if I said that to you.
Thank you, Angela. Happy New Year, everybody. I believe in your packets, you do have the actual grants that we accepted this year, and then that sheet that we just handed out to you is just kind of an example of the grants that we've awarded since the beginning. So that total dollar amount of $188,896.2, that is how many...that's the sum total of grants that has been awarded through the years. And I believe, was it 2008 that we started? So since our inception, Faces has been able to award that amount of grants. And as Angela said, we are a committee, but there's a lot of people behind us, so we thank them for that. Just kind of want to paint a picture, just to give you an idea of some of the things Faces has supported in the past. A lot of it is technology, as you know, such as whiteboards, document cameras, document camera projectors, Quizdom sets, all kinds of technology-based materials. However, we do support...our whole idea, like Angela said, is to kind of creative and unusual ways of learning. So other things, we have kind of non-technology grants you see there, things like professional storytellers, children's authors, looking at Lincoln, a group Northeastern University Marine Science Center trip. So a group went out to Northeastern and did some science there. So as you can see, our goal too is to try to include, sorry, across the curriculum all different kinds of activities that students might not have access to. Another example of that is with the English Language Arts, with the Shakespeare performances here at the high school. And then finally, at the bottom of the sheet, you can see the breakdown of the number of grants awarded to each school. And they're all about...they're around pretty much the same with...I find this interesting. Number of grants awarded to FHS has been a dozen. Number of grants awarded to the Ahearn is 22. Number of grants to the Igo has been six, to the Borough has been eight, and to the Taylor also six. And that makes for a grand total of 54 grants awarded to all those schools. And we're very happy with that, and like Angela said, we'd like to support the students and give them, hopefully, and the teachers as well, a little something different, a little extra that they might not normally have. Is there anything else? Yes, I'm sorry. And without further ado, drum roll, please. Okay. So I'd like to announce that Faces is very happy to announce that we will be awarding to the Borough School, grades one through three, five Hover Cam T3s. And basically, it's my understanding, and Jim might help me out with this, they had originally asked for like an Elmo projector, which is something that the schools have right now. And a team at the Ahearn School actually found these other kind of Hover Cams, they're called, and they're...they do the same thing, and so we ended up buying the Hover Cam as opposed to the Elmo projector, but it...
They're both document cameras.
Thank you.
Two different projects.
Right. And so we could grant more, because the Hover Cams are significantly less expensive, so we were able to, you know, buy more for that. So the Borough School, once again, grades one through three will be...have five brand-new Hover Cams. At the high school here in the Science Department, they will be getting a Flip Classroom video pilot. The Ahearn School, grade six math, will also be receiving Hover Cams. They asked for six Hover Cams, so they'll be receiving those. And back up here at the high school in the Social Studies Department, we're very excited about this particular one. They will be receiving a whole video production lab, which will include 10 iMac editing computers. So that's...
To the tune of "Trick Me."
So...Jim, do you want to add anything?
Nope. I can't possibly do better than my wife. Thank you. The total for this year is $29,159.
That's great. Very generous, and thank you again. Well, when we were here last month, if you remember, we had two new courses approved at the high school, Communication Arts I and Video Production, that we were...that you approved for next year's program of studies. And we said at the time that unless we could get grant funding for the equipment, it would wait until we could, but we wanted the courses approved, because that's the first step. So without them, the course would...those courses would not be happening. And I think it's...we talked last month about how we used to have Video Production and Communication Arts classes here at the high school, and we lost them, and we don't have any...there's no equipment that could do it now. The equipment at the time, that the courses were canceled, was partially due to retirement, but also it was outdated equipment and it couldn't run anymore. So I just was...I just thought that this is such a...I would call this a legacy move on the part of the Faces organization, because this is not anything near anything we can do. And I give them so much credit, because they're so thoughtful every year about balancing all the grants that come in, and how do they view them, and does it fit with their mission? And they're really very thoughtful about it. I'm always impressed by the questions that they ask before they undertake their private deliberations, as it would be. And sometimes, you know, if you remember in the beginning, we didn't have any interactive whiteboards until they seeded us with a few, and then it caught on. We didn't have any document cameras until they seeded us with a few. So they really do do exactly what they hoped they would do, which is to seed us with innovative ideas that we may not have the money right now to try, but if we try them, then we'll, you know, where there's a wolf, there's a way. That's what happens after that. But I was really thrilled that you're funding the video production, because I just can tell you how much my son got out of it in high school. But I think if...to have a more current thought about it, do you remember when we were here as part of the...it was very recently that, before they graduated, the spring, you had Cooper Vashron, one of our high school students, who came and showed the video about being a student at FHS, and it was part of the NIASC visit. And it was so impressive what those students did on their own, without a course, without instruction, without equipment here. They actually did it on their own. So when I read Mr. Callahan's grant proposal to Faces, he was really quite eloquent in his bid for it, and he started by saying that the inspiration for his grant proposal was Cooper Vashron and his small team that did that video, to say that their video, having taken upon themselves, illustrated the breadth and depth of how Foxborough High School's made a positive impact on our students and the community at large. And he went on to talk about how they took their own time and effort to create it. However, they had very little technical support at Foxborough High School due to the lack of such technology to produce a video. And then he goes on to say, "In addition, if these students were interested in creating such work, how many more students would take an interest in that kind of learning as well?" And that's really the essential question. And I think there are many more out there, and who knows what they can do if we reinstate this. So honestly, without them, this would not be happening. So I couldn't be happier about this real legacy project on your behalf. It's going to be fabulous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just want to thank the four people at the table and the rest of the Faces board. I mean, these guys really do such a great thing for our community. I know we all feel that way, and every year, we're privileged to sit here and listen to what you've been able to accomplish. So thank you to the four of you, and please thank the rest of the members. And just a quick question, if I may. How is Faces doing in general, knowing that these are challenging times and...
Like every community organization, I think the fiscal challenge has been there, and it's really heightened since 2008. And I think this year, it's particularly accentuated. I know that going forward, these people are really dedicated and passionate about doing this work. So I think where there's a desire and a passion to continue the vision and the commitment, we will continue to be there. And we just need to be nimble and innovative and respond to opportunities, maybe collaborative measures. So we're going to get back to the table and think about ways in which we can, you know, start more donor cultivation. And this might... And this might be a PSA moment. So, we can say, if anyone is willing to come to us and they have great ideas, there's... We embrace that.
A month of money.
Yeah. So, you know, we're open to any and all good suggestions. Thank you.
Well, it's very exciting with the encouragement that this board and this organization brings forth. It is encouraging innovative thinking in the teachers. I mean, you had over ninety-two thousand dollars' worth of requests for this year alone. So, people, if they are provided the way, they will innovate. So, it's vital. You are a vital part of our system.
You know what's really inspiring, though? I don't know if you came in the end. When you hear the student feedback, the student development, the student piece, you had a student up here talking about his firsthand experience and his thought process and his growth through the firsthand experience, being in that student congress. That is what gives us fuel. I mean, there's nothing greater than that. And so, you know, I would simply say, you know, as NEASC asks, and you have an opportunity, bringing children to the table, the student... I mean, that is just... That's wonderful to hear. To reaffirm it.
I just want to echo what everybody said. And I think like the impressiveness of the teachers that did submit requests. Obviously, that gets filtered down. And we see it because they infuse and inspire the students, like you just did, Angela. So, I just want to thank all of you because it's very clear now how thoughtful and time-consuming this process is. You have a lot of requests, and it's a lot, you know... And so, it must be a real challenge for all of you to make decisions about what you choose. And I'm sure it's hard because you probably want to accept everyone. But obviously, you know, there are barriers to that. So, we do appreciate your time and effort in doing that, really, truly. We're really so fortunate. Just so impressive. So, thank you.
And I think if I could just say to the teachers too out there, if they could continue sending us your grants, you know, please don't, you know... We would, if we could, we would fund every single one, but we can't. So, please don't ever get discouraged. And please continue to ask for these because that's what keeps us going. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Do we need to move to accept the grant?
Oh, yes. That would be lovely. If you... If someone would have a motion to accept the...
Yes. Make a motion to accept the Faces grant. All right. It's a motion and seconded.
Okay. Just want to make a disclaimer because two of my children, our children, grown adults, sit on the Faces Board. So, I just want people aware of that.
Well, they... We do the arrangements, but they actually purchase directly. They don't give us the money.
No, I know that.
So, I just want to be clear, though, because sometimes, a few years later, we forget the process.
Yep.
So, you might...
By voting to accept it, I just want people... I just need to get something back.
Okay. Quick. Yes, all in favor, vote five, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very exciting.
Yes.
And I, you know, I also... I felt like one more thing, you know, I always have too many points to make, but...
No, it's all right.
I want to remind, you know, first of all, few communities have an educational foundation with dedicated people who continue to raise money for this type of thing. Of those that do, especially in the tough economic times over the last, you know, several years, it can be really tempting to just rely on that private organization to... For things we should be providing. We just go to them to buy stuff that we don't want to put... But we've never done that. It's been... It's really been, truly, they're the inspiration for the innovation aspect of education. And we haven't succumbed to that temptation to rely on them for what we should be providing day to day. So, I think it's great on your behalf and on their behalf and ours in the system that it really is stay true to their original mission.
When some of these large grants are given, do we have... Is there any way we can have people come back and tell us how they did with them? You know, like the music, the smart music?
Well, I'd be shocked if that wasn't a teaching learning highlight next year. Or if maybe we didn't have a tour of the video project.
Well, the smart music immersion that was granted, that was like almost $1,000. If they could come back and tell us, you know, was it... Did they advantage to have it, or...
We could. But one of the things that the Faces organization does, most of the time, is they'll ask for an end-of-the-year, you know, report to them. But I think when they fill out the grant application, it says what your obligation would be. So, there are, you know, we do have staff members who want to apply for a grant. But if it says you would also have to appear to school committee, and you would have to file a report at the end, we have to be true to what they were... To what the Faces... Because some years, they have not asked for an end-of-the-year report, and sometimes they have. It's an impact on student learning. So, I wouldn't want to, you know, go back and surprise people with a new requirement.
No, no. But as far as, if this is theoretically seed money to try and get these programs off the ground, and if we're going to take over funding or try to enhance them, I think it would be to our advantage to know how well did it or did it not work? And is it something we want to continue? Because now, it's probably our liability to keep it going.
Well, most of them, we have, though. If you remember, I think it was last year or the year before, I can't remember, we had a report that said how many they originally purchased and then how many we own now. Wasn't it just last year?
We did that in the technology, right?
We did. So, we have done that, to say what's happened with their seeds, you know? How have the seeds grown? So, I think we have done that. I don't know if we... I'd have to think about whether I would want to have, you know, teachers come and talk about the impact. Because they've awarded so many different grants that I don't know if that's, you know...
Okay.
I think if you look down the list, Martha, you'll see that most of the stuff you... After it being successful.
No, no. I'm talking about up here, like the smart music immersion, which was a huge, you know, obligation for Mr. Hagerty and the group. And I'd just like to know, you know, was it... Did it help the students?
Oh, they love it. But I mean, that's not portable, so that's a big... That's a hard thing to get. But most of the stuff, we... One of the upcoming meetings, I don't have my little list with me, we're planning... A teaching learning highlight will be about the document cameras. Because we talk about them a lot, but nobody actually knows what they do. But they're... I call it one of the simplest, most brilliant technologies. So, you'll see some of it. We are going to try to do... That is on, I think, for one of the February meetings, or it could be the next one. And we made a list over the next couple of months of what the teaching... So, you will see those kinds of things. And we'll have teachers talking about the impact of that. Because it's something we've mentioned a lot, but not really explained. What is it and why is it so magic?
Yeah. It's also good, to Martha's point, to Angela's as well, to hear from the students, I think. Because I like to hear how they're experiencing the different technologies and the things that they take away from the congress or from having a document camera in class versus not having one. I think it's very instructive to us and the public to hear from the kids as well.
Entice some students to come for the document.
Very good. Moving along. We need to approve the 2013-2014 school calendar.
Yes. This is typically something that the board does either January or February. It used to be a traditional... I call it a traditional February activity. But I think the last couple of years, we moved up to the end of January, or maybe... This might be the earliest we've done it. But it does help us with scheduling and rolling students forward when the high school students start doing their course selection. It is helpful if we have the calendar with the end of the term dates already approved. So, if it's okay with the committee to discuss and vote tonight, that's fine. If you want more time to think about it, that's also fine. So, what you see for next year's calendar, I think the one thing that we would like to point out is we're staying with what you typically have seen over the last many years. Most of the discussion with our FEA Association partners and with our administrators and with some groups of teachers here and there is, what do we do about December 23rd? So, it's an awkward calendar next year. Christmas falls on a Wednesday. So, Monday, the 23rd, we could actually be in session if we wanted to. In our discussions, we don't really... Haven't really had a feeling that it would be a particularly useful day. But knowing that, knowing it does put the last day of school to the June 18th rather than 17th. So, it's by one day. I also reached out to a lot of other communities to see what they're thinking of doing. And no one is coming back on December 30 and 31, Monday and Tuesday, smack in the middle of the holidays. That's a consideration, but no one's going to do that, nor do I think that's a good idea. And I would say it's about 50/50 right now, whether they are going to have school on Monday, the 23rd, or not. We decided to put forward a draft to you that said, once we leave school on Friday, the 20th, let's stay out. Families that travel to relatives out of state will probably appreciate that or having family in. And we just weren't sure it was going to be a real useful day. So, that's the draft we put forward, is not to come to school, to... Once we're out on the 20th, to stay out until January 2nd, the day after New Year's.
And we looked back several years. And the span is seven days to nine days. And I remember having a couple of Christmas vacations with nine days. So, this is right in the middle. It's eight.
It's eight. So, yeah, we look back. Wendy got off the calendars from the last 10 years. So, we stay out any... Anywhere between seven and nine days, and this is eight. So, it looks like it might be long, but it's actually right within how we usually do.
But it seems like it's really only that one day, the 23rd.
That's really the only one under discussion.
I don't think we should heat up the buildings for one day.
Yeah. Especially with that weekend.
Nobody had a compelling reason for putting that on the calendar.
Waiting for a dawn, you.
I don't want the gas building either.
No, but, you know, the reason the college is shut down for a month or six weeks, whatever, is because of cost of fuel. So, I think it's, you know, it's kind of silly for us to...
For just one.
...place up for one day, then shut it down again.
Yes. And the one, I think...
You're not sure how much you're going to get out of students anyway at that point, when it's, you have a weekend, and then you have one day, and then they know they're going... I mean, it doesn't...
And it might be a high absentee. We felt it would be kind of a bah humbug kind of day.
We don't want to be like that.
No, I wasn't feeling that. I mean, it really is all about, it affects the other end of the calendar. So, there's no one right way.
But that's just one day.
It's only one day.
Right.
I don't have a problem.
I don't either.
Is there any significance to November 14, 15, 18, 19 being highlighted?
Yes. So, I mean, those are the conferences.
Just the early conferences, yeah.
Yep. The 14th and 15th are the elementary conferences, and 18, 19 are the...
I see. Right below it. I'm fine with it as is.
And the only thing I just make a comment, but I'm sure that you're going to put June. The seniors' last day is June 2nd. The graduation is June 8th. Right in that little box? We don't have the month in there.
Well, it's right next to June, so...
No, but...
But, yeah. To make it clear.
That'd be fine. Sure. Just add the word June. See down the bottom, right? Just so it says June 2, June 8, June 18.
And have all...
Just for clarification.
Have all families...
They might think that it's May, but...
No such law?
No.
Have all families note that the 25th is the possible last day of school and not the planned vacation.
It's the hardest concept to get, that our legal calendar that you vote must include five snow days. Five, as it chooses law.
Right.
So, it must include 185 days for students. Now, we have 185-day calendar because we have a professional... But 180 days of school plus five to save for snow. So, it's a message we have to constantly deliver to both parents and staff, that you have to reserve any plans you have through, say, June 25th next year. So, in that... So that you don't... If we have a snow day, you don't say, well, I thought we were getting out on the 18th, so I have plans. So, the official calendar includes those five snow days.
But we don't... We can't go into July, right?
Cannot go into July.
It's only going to snow on the weekends, so it's not a problem.
Right. Oh, good. Well, we only close for power outages now, anyway.
Right.
Okay.
Not snow.
Do you need a motion to approve this?
Yes.
Abishon's right uptown. Walk and get a shovel. It'll be fine.
Make a motion to approve the calendar 2013-2014.
Martha's second. All in favor? Five, zero, zero.
By the way, people watching at home, I'm joking. We don't just close for... We might indeed close for snow on occasion.
But on record, that's all.
We just haven't done it yet.
That's all you've had to do since you've taken over the helm, correct?
That was a joke. Thank you.
Now, much more work has been done. And thank you, both of you, Dr. Judith Sims Knight and Dr. Raymond Knight. The results and analysis of the 2012 bullying survey for middle and high school students.
Yes. So, we're going to have the doctors' night, as I call them, sit on the side.
The doctors' night.
They're also running off their laptop, their database and their survey information. So, while they're getting settled, I just want to say again, as I did last year, we're so fortunate to have them. Dr. Judith Sims Knight is a university professor at UMass Dartmouth. And Dr. Raymond Knight is a university professor at Brandeis. And they raise their children here and send their children to Foxborough Schools. And when... A few years ago, when we started the Community Task Force for bullying, to address bullying harassment, they came forward and have been the most active partners of all since. And we couldn't be collecting the kind of data we get without them. So, this is not a survey that we construct on our own, that they're just helping us figure out what it means. They actually helped, have helped a lot of companies construct the survey. It's their software that runs it. They can do analyses that are at such a level we could never possibly do on our own. So, it is truly a research partnership. And we look forward to it. So, we've seen this a few times. They presented it first to Amy and myself, so we could look at the preliminary information. They presented it to the administrative team, and we had an evening meeting of our Community Task Force. So, now it's... This is our public analysis, and they'll talk to you a lot about what kinds of analyses they do. It is fascinating. It does take a while, so I did put this on. This is our most meaty agenda item for tonight, and it really deserves our time and attention. But I can't thank you enough. I know I say it every time. No one else has this kind of partnership, so once again...
So, this is the second year. We're a tag team. Judy did the first year, so this year, you get me. We always switch everything. The objectives for this survey were slightly different from the original one. We're looking here at assessing types of aggression across grades and years. And one of the things that we wanted to focus on during this current survey was to target more some of the areas in which the aggression is occurring, so that we could use that information to better focus the kinds of interventions that we do. We also were very interested in using the survey as a basis for judging whether any kind of interventions are effective. And the most important one was the caring school community program, which had already started. So, just let me show you what I mean by assessing that. So, we have the fifth graders in 2011 actually moved to sixth grade in 2012. The fifth graders in 2011 had experienced the caring school community. So, that one of the big differences that becomes important is for the sixth graders, 2011 to 2012, are they really different? Or did we get an improvement from those fifth graders having experienced the caring school community and then moving on to sixth grade and having a different experience from the prior sixth graders? We also have the caring school community. Fourth graders from 2011 have now moved into 2012. We would hypothesize that they would be very much equivalent to the fifth graders, and we'll be looking at that as we go through. As we did with the initial survey, we were very interested in ensuring the validity of the instrument. So, one of the things that's built into the software is if the student answers too quickly, that is faster than they could actually read the question, they're warned. And then if they don't comply, then they're excluded. We also have, yeah, we also have a reading test. So, the instructions for the inventory have a reading test that is geared at the fourth grade level. The reading test has two functions. One of them is to detect people who are having difficulty processing the questions. The second is if people really don't want to engage the inventory, they're going to make wrong answers. And this year, we had 35 middle schoolers and 37 high schools who were excluded because they essentially failed the reading test. That doesn't mean necessarily they can't read, but at least they weren't going to play our game. We also eliminated students who were duplicitous in that they were overly positive about their lives. We have this positive deceptivity scale, which is things like, I'm always polite when people are... Even when people are rude, or, you know, I never litter. Things like that, that are, if you are really extreme in your defensiveness, you will score very, very high. And we excluded ten middle schoolers and fifteen high schoolers for that. And this is comparable to the first year as well. We also had an improbability scale, which is a couple of items. I, I have watched TV, so if you say never, it's very unlikely that any of the students have never seen TV. So, you're kind of, that's both, they might not be paying attention, or they might not be doing, wanting to answer the, the items correctly. What we did is ask the students six to eight questions about each type of aggression, and I'll, I'll go over the types of aggression again. And we had parallel questions being asked about aggressors and about being a target. So, this is an example of an aggressive question. "I grabbed and held someone against their will." And the parallel question, the target question, would be, "Someone has grabbed me or held me against my will." So, the, the, there are five different kinds of aggression that we did assess. Non-physical aggression is when it's, there's no physical contact, but the property of the individual is accosted by the, by the aggressor. Relational aggression is aggression that occurs within a social context. Cyber aggression is aggression that occurs on the internet, essentially. And then, both last year, in the first survey and the second survey, we had sexual harassment questions. And these were given only in the high school to students who were sixteen years or older. An example here is I've talked about sex, I've told suggestive stories when it made someone uncomfortable. So, these are the five kinds of aggression that we're looking at. We also were interested not only in assessing the aggression, but the computer program, if someone is identified as an aggressor or identified as a target, goes into a subroutine and asks specific questions that can get at information that's important for understanding the nature of the aggression. Also, we got questions, as we're gonna see later on, that has to do with the targets, asking where it occurred, what they did, and those kinds of things. So, these particular measures, the proactive and reactive aggression, assess the nature of aggression. Proactive is instrumental aggression, is aggression that's planned, it's done ahead of time. Reactive, as the name indicates, is a reaction to perceived hurt. Social isolation, as the name suggests, is not having a lot of friends. And emotional dysregulation is not being able to control your emotions that well. An item on that one is, "My moods are constantly up and down," or "I have trouble with my anxiety," kinds of questions. So, the first thing we're gonna do is, we're going to look at the effect of the two thousand and twelve versus two thousand and eleven levels of aggression. And then the second part, we're going to look at the specific aspects of the, the targets and the aggressors, on their motivation and the social context in which it occurred. So, here is, and we're gonna do it separately as we did last time, for middle school and for high school. So, what you see in, in this one, we're going to present to you the data, that each of the items is a six-point scale. It goes from never through to almost daily. So, this particular level of it indicates at least once the person indicated that they had been physically aggressive. Here, it's almost daily. So, you can see forty-eight percent in middle school, over the entire middle school, indicated that they had been aggressive at least once during the last year, and here, almost daily, four point five percent. So, the good news are these asterisks, because the asterisks are significance levels, and this is our way of trying to determine the differences that we find. Can they be attributed to chance, or they, do they seem to be real differences? And so, what we do in statistics is we use this P equals O five. What that means, which is this little, almost single asterisk, is that the chances of this, the difference between two thousand and twelve and two thousand and eleven being by chance alone would be five in a hundred. So, the non-physical is one in a thousand are the chances that that difference would occur. So, what is, so the really, really good news is that between two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve, over the entire middle school, in all four domains of aggression that were assessed in the middle school, there were significant decreases. Okay, which is very good news, and it's always nice to be the bearer of good news.
Can I interrupt you?
Sure.
So, I agree, it's moving in the right direction, but are you saying that forty-eight percent of our students in the middle school said that they had been physical aggressors a year ago?
The whole notion of how it is you define something that is a physical aggressor, what they said is that they had done at least one aggressive act.
Forty-eight percent of our students said that.
Right, had said, had said that, yes. And it dropped down to forty-two percent.
At some time, at some time during that school year.
At some time during that time.
Just seems like a high number to me.
Now, are we talking in school or out of school?
It's, it's in there, it's in and out of school, it's any place, they have been aggressive.
Okay.
What they're, I think the thing that you want to look more at is the almost daily.
I understand.
Yeah, and basically, we only define someone as quote-unquote "an aggressor," which is kind of identifying them in an extreme way, if that aggression has been repetitive over time. And a single incidence is not something that, you know, I would be as concerned about as I would the, the constant repetition of that aggression.
Sure, but if, but I'm still surprised that even forty-eight percent of our students said that.
Yes, it's, aggression is quite common in our society, yes.
At the end, Bruce, it defines the locations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, at the end, Bruce, it's the left.
Okay, thank you.
But I, I, I hear your point, Bruce. We're, we're talking about almost fifty percent
Yeah.
of the, of the students, and that does seem like a high amount. I mean, but, like you said, it's one single-
It's one single, it could be one single shove.
It could be one single, or it could be doing it every day. The four point five percent is included in the forty-eight percent.
Sure.
So, it's a, a whole range of levels. And all I'm doing is giving the extremes, so you can see what those levels are and get an appreciation of it. But it did drop by six percent and vice.
Yeah, it's good.
So, that's, that's indeed the direction that we have to, have to move in. So, there's a decline. If you look at the entire middle school and you try to find out what of our scales indicate what changed, the proactive and the reactive aggression over the entire middle school went down significantly, okay? Still, if you look at the worst kinds of aggression, the non-physical and the relational, which are the ones that improved the best, you've still got now, if you average between them, sixty percent who have at least once, and you have approximately here, five percent who are doing it almost daily. That's better than six and sixty-five percent, but it's still a, you know, still a problem, sixty-nine percent. But we're improving, but there's still a lot, a long way to go in how we move on this. Now, what we're gonna do is, we're going to break the, the groups down for which area of the school is the most significant, which is which subset of the middle school. And in the middle school, we broke it down both by grade and by sex. And what you see is, it's the seventh grade boys who win the award for the greatest amount of aggression. And you can see, like, in a relational, eighty percent of the time, at least once, and fifteen percent of the time, almost daily, for that group. This is to compare it to last year. So, you see there are some similarities in physical aggression, in that it was the seventh grade boys. But last year, we had the eighth grade boys. When we have eighth here, that means boys and girls were equal. It couldn't be statistically discriminated. And then, eighth grade boys were the subgroup with the most aggressive. So, the highest group is the seventh grade boys, and relational aggression is the worst part. Now, when we move down to physical aggression, remember that we did have a significant O five level. But when you go to the individual grades that we're doing right now, here, looking at the aggressors, not targets, these are people who've admitted the aggression themselves as perpetrators. We don't get any significant differences within each of the grades. What we do get is a very interesting pattern, that the fifth graders moving into sixth grade stayed the same. The sixth graders moving into seventh grade, and we just looked at the seventh grade boys being a problem, increased. So, I use red to indicate it's increasing. White means stays the same, and blue, Massachusetts is a blue state. Blue, blue means that we are doing better, okay? So, the seventh grade boys of two thousand and eleven got better into two thousand and twelve. Non-physical aggression, here, we get this amazing finding, which is going to be repeated in a number of different ways, of this significant effect for the sixth grade. You remember, the caring school community is essentially saying that the, the fifth graders from two thousand and eleven moved into the sixth grade, they didn't change, but they were significantly better than the prior sixth graders, suggesting that something about their experience in the caring school community carried over into their sixth grade experience. There's also this little finding here of a significant effect in the eighth grade. And we're gonna see this both here, and we're gonna see it in the targets. There are a number of different explanations that you could propose for that. You could say, "There was an incredible amount of community support to go, to, to deal with aggression. There were a number of things that we did." It also was the case, however, that Sue Abrams did focus on the eighth graders and did an intervention in the school itself, where she got a group of eighth graders who were working with her to change that. So, this might be some of the effect of, of her program. We don't know. We'll have to look, you know, follow it throughout the, throughout the years. We had the same pattern of the white, red, blue. Sixth graders got worse as they went to seventh, the seventh graders got better as they went to eighth. This pattern, we're going to see as a kind of consistent pattern that goes across the board. Again, with relational aggression, we get now, the sixth graders have, are significantly better than the, the, in two thousand and twelve than the sixth graders in two thousand and eleven. Again, it's a caring school community effect, and we get the same effect. The difference here, I made it a dull red because it was only a small effect, but again, you see that kind of same pattern of the staying the same, getting worse, and getting better. Cyber aggression, also in cyber aggression, we didn't get any effects. We did get the pattern of the fifth graders staying the same into sixth grade, and the sixth graders getting worse, and the seventh graders getting, getting better. Okay, so now, we're gonna move not from the aggressors, but now we're asking those individuals who were targets. So, the data that I just presented were individuals admitting that they were aggressive. What's very interesting is, if you compare the rates of aggress, that aggressors report to the rates that the targets report, they're very, very comparable. And this is very important, because we have to have checks within our data to determine whether we're getting a consistent picture of what's going on, which indicates that the data are really giving us a valid assessment of the aggression that's occurring. And what you see, if you look at it, is that the aggression is the same. And the aggression is the same basically across years. So, we're getting cross-year and cross-sample. The aggressors are completely different people from the, from the targets. Here, we have the targets admitting that the aggression has gone down over the entire middle school in non-physical and relational. So, it's not in physical, but it is in, and in cyber, but there was a significant drop in aggression from the perspective of the targets between two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve. Generally, the overall, there's a decline, but it's only reliable in physical and relational. Despite the decline, we still have that very, very high level of aggression that occurs in the non-physical and the relational. Here, you got about seventy-five percent, which is indeed better than eighty, and you've got here about eight percent, which is better than nine percent, but still, it's a very high level in the relational aggression, indicating we still have a lot of work to do. Here, we're looking now at the subgroups of targets who are the most targeted. And you see the seventh grade boys, again, occupy the physical and the cyber. The seventh grade girls are the highest in relational, and the sixth grade, so this indicates you can't differentiate significantly between females and males for that. If we look at two thousand and eleven, what you see is that the sixth grade girls carried their relational aggression into the seventh grade, it seems. But there were some differences. The boys are, were consistent across the years. Here, it's the sixth grade girls going into seventh grade, and here, the boys have joined the girls in the, the non-physical. So, the highest group is the seventh grade girls who were relational targets, and that, you can see, is, the relational is, is very high, eighty-five percent and twelve percent almost daily. Now, we're going to break it down into each type of aggression by the targets, and this is the one finding that we have that goes somewhat against the caring school community, because what happened here is we got a significant increase. So, these are the, the fourth graders in two thousand and eleven moved into the fifth grade in two thousand and twelve, and they are significantly higher than the fifth graders in two thousand and eleven. Now, here, it's as targets, so it's fourth graders moving in and reporting that they are targeted more aggressively, physically, than were the prior fifth graders. And there, there are lots of hypotheses that we can generate about this and the changes, but it's certainly something we should look at and consider about, as to how we can ameliorate that effect. We have the same pattern, this is now in targets rather than in aggressors. You get exactly the same pattern of the fifth graders remaining the same at the sixth, the sixth grade is getting worse, and the seventh grade is getting better as they move into eighth grade. Again, these consistent patterns that you get, both across targets and aggressors, are very convincing that the data are really picking up something that's real there that we can depend on. Non-physical aggression, we get back our wonderful sixth grade effect. So, they, the, and this is now with targets. So, targets are reporting in the, oops, I wanted to go back here. Targets are reporting that they are, have less aggression, the, the fifth graders are being less targeted for aggression than were the sixth graders. And these, again, are the individuals who are on the caring school community. We didn't get the kind of pattern completely here, the red in, at non-physical targets, there was no difference between the sixth graders moving into, into seventh grade.
Can I ask you a question before we go to the next slide? That eighty-three point two percent, that's the fifth graders, the current fifth graders who had the caring school community in fourth grade last year.
In fourth grade.
So, do you think, and I know you're gonna get to this at the end, but do you think they're better at identifying when they are being targeted?
That's one, that's definitely, that's a good, that's a, that's a good possibility. I mean, we don't know. They're, they're, again, they're coming into a new school, it's a new situation. They're changing from an environment in which the entire community is thinking about how we work as a community, and thinking about how it is we resolve conflict. And they're moving into a situation in which that's a different game.
Well, they're going from being the oldest children in the school to being the youngest.
They're also in one classroom.
Right.
Now, they're in fifth grade, they're moving in hallways, they have lockers, there's a lot more, you know, there's a lot more going on in their world to, to learn and to negotiate, I guess I would say.
They didn't mean to get off track.
No.
No, it's good, but I think the point, you know, we don't know sometimes, we really don't know. We can't always draw a two-hundred percent conclusion on what that means. I know Sue's been working a lot, but she may have time to talk about with helping kids to understand the definitions and the differences amongst simple harassment or mean comment versus bullying versus aggression. So, we don't know if, as they understand the terms better, although this isn't really about terms, this is actually about actions, and did it happen to them or not. So, that's why this survey gives us valuable information, is that it really doesn't matter if they understand the definition or not. They can, you know, give reliable information. But could it, could it be that they are more aware because there's more discussion, and so they, could be, you know, we don't really know.
See, the, the wonderful thing about having a survey that goes over the years is that, once you analyze it and everyone looks at it, then we develop the survey for the next year. So, you could see, we're gonna be presenting a little bit later on the issues of, gee, we really need to know more about targeting and where things are happening. We need to know more about motivation. So, we change the survey to answer the very questions that you have. So, that's something that could be addressed in a survey in the next year to see whether that's true. And that, that's the beauty of data, you can actually find out what's going on and answer the questions rather than only being speculative.
You know, I, I know we pushed a long time ago to have four grades at the, at the middle school that, you know, was the way to go and all that. But, boy, when you take a look at something like that, it does give you pause for thought. Now, those kids really ready to be thrown into this kind of mix, you know, and you hate to go back and say, "Well, you know, when I was in school..." It's almost like we protected them longer by keeping them in an elementary setting because, well, first of all, we didn't have kindergarten, we didn't have public kindergarten. So, we had one through five. And it, you know, I look at that, and I'm like, wow, what did we unleash them on?
But you gotta remember, the, these, these differences, this was not significant, so they're really experiencing the same thing here as they did.
Eighty-three percent in two thousand and twelve, I, I'm impressed with that number. I really am.
That's once, remember.
I, I know, but seventy-one is, you know, but look at the seventh grade, it's eighty-two point nine, eighth grade is eighty-one. It's like, wow, you know, I'm, I'm just, here, you look back and, and you try not to say, "Well, you know, we need to move forward, we need to be progressive," but it does give you pause for thought, and are these kids really ready to be thrown into this kind of mix?
We really don't know, though, if, for example, some of this stuff starts to escalate because of the developmental nature of the stage they're in, that, you know, hormones, emotions, the, the nature of the, the pre-adolescent student. So, we, we don't know if we'd get the exact, let's say, fifth grade's still at the elementary school, because many districts are. The one I used to work in is, and let me tell you, those things happen in fifth grade there. So, is it, is it a function of the fact that they're in that building, or is it really that as the, everything kicks in, the hormones and the developmental nature of that period in development, is that what it is? Because you see higher numbers as they get a little bit older in middle school, and I can assure you that middle school-
Yeah, but academically and school-wise, our challenges, our expectations, maybe these kids just aren't mentally, physically, personality-wise, ready for that kind of quantum leap sometimes. I mean, you just, I don't know, it'd be interesting over the years if we keep doing this, and if we keep getting those kind of numbers when the kids are coming up through the fifth grade. I, it would give me pause for thought of dying, as to, you know, do you need to rethink it, but where you gonna put them anyways?
Yeah.
But we'd have to chase down the information that says it's the environment.
Oh, absolutely.
So, and we don't know that.
We only have one reliable, I mean, the numbers, they might look big, but the only reliable finding we have is the physical aggression.
Yeah, right.
That's really the only one that says that they're really different from the prior sixth graders. And really, basically, what you try to do statistically is you try to only believe the things that are statistically reliable, you know, couldn't have occurred simply by chance, and those are the things you have to work on first. What you would wanna do, though, is, again, try in further future surveys to test out some of these things by asking the kids themselves if they are experiencing that. So, all right, so then, this is the, the relational targets. And again, we get the, the effect for the, for the sixth graders, and we have- the sixth graders, and we have, here, the fifth graders actually improved as they went into sixth grade in relational targets. The sixth graders, contrary to previous ones, did improve going into seventh grade, and so we got overall improvement in relational targets as they each moved up. But the only significant difference within a grade was the sixth graders who are now, the prior fifth graders are now significantly lower than the 2011, again, a caring school community effect. Here we have the cyber targets, and again, we get that kind of consistent result, the fifth graders improved, the sixth graders got worse as they went in, and here the seventh graders stayed the same as they went to eighth grade. Again, we're having an increase, as we'll see, in cyber aggression as you move up, and that'll be evident in some other slides that are later on. So what are the overall results in the middle school? Significant decline in all four aggressor types between 2011 and 2012, which is just great news. Non-physical and relational aggression still remain the highest aggressive types. Most problematic group were the seventh grade boys. There's a consistent pattern of results, which is the fifth grader's moving into sixth grade being less aggressive, which very strongly supports the caring school community as having an effect. And in fact, one would say with the aggressors and with the targets, the majority of the overall effect in the middle school is due to this particular single effect. Okay, and targets, a significant decline in non-physical and relational targets between 2011 and 2012. The seventh grade boys are joined by the seventh grade girls and by the sixth graders, both boys and girls, and being the most targeted. The increased physical aggressive, the one place that we find contrary evidence to the caring school community that's significant is in the physical aggression, where the fourth graders in 2011 are, now the fifth graders in 2012 were significantly higher than the fifth graders in 2011. Other target improvements in non-physical, relational, and cyber targets all can be explained by the caring school community. So potential explanations, so we went in to look a little bit closer. Overall, remember I said, the proactive and the reactive aggression went down, but when we target specifically what was going on related to the caring school community effect, what we found was not proactive. Proactive is not, didn't change at all. It's not the instrumental kind of aggression, but it's the emotional component, the reactive aggression, the emotional dysregulation, and the social isolation, kids feeling much more part and being involved in something, in a community that is really working, which is, it's nice to know that the aims of the caring school community are really being carried out. We also looked at bystander results. There was a little bit of reduction in not just standing by, but that other results went in the opposite direction, so it didn't seem that the bystander really accounted for it. So what this suggests is that the caring school community effect is really hitting the individual more than it is the social context. So these individuals are taking something forward with them as they move into the later-
In learning, like how to regulate themselves, how to make good decisions.
How to be part of a community and so forth, which is very nice.
Which will, in the long term, impact the community.
Absolutely.
Because if these individuals then join together.
You have to work from both sides, absolutely. But it's, being part of a community helps the individual, again, to regulate themselves. In the high school, we didn't find in 2011 any differences at all in any of the grades as far as types of aggression and the frequencies. I redid the analyses for 2012, and we got only one oh-five, just a slight effect, which was the seniors had less physical aggression than the ninth and tenth graders. And this was for the targets, not for the aggressors. So there was only one minor effect, which was very, very small, so we analyzed the high school altogether. It really wasn't necessary to go through it by grade. So here what we see is there are two effects in the high school. This is from the aggressors. Relational aggression and cyber aggression declined between 2011 and 2012 overall in the high school. Reasons for this, this is one that you must thank the community effort and the involvement in all of the various programs that the task force did and the administration has been doing, and the kind of focus on this has really helped this, that's, that would be your best. In physical, non-physical, and sexual, we didn't find any differences.
They all declined, but not statistically significant.
Not statistically significant, right. When we look at the most aggressive, now here, we're not going by grade, but we're just doing male, female. So no surprise, the males are most physically, non-physical, and sexually aggressive individuals. They're more so than the females in relation, and in cyber aggression, males and females are equal. And you can see that the, in the non-physical, the males are quite high here, again, seventy percent at least once and ten percent almost daily. So there are no grade differences. Cyber aggression is higher than in the middle school, which is not surprising. As we're going to see, it really starts to ramp up in the seventh and eighth grade as it goes into high school. And sexual harassment was as high as cyber aggression. And you'll remember from last year, we did analyses on the relation among the various kinds of aggression. And so one of the findings was that if you have one kind of aggression, you're highly likely to have other kinds of aggression. And so the sexual harassment is something that might be addressed by dealing with the other kinds of aggression, because eighty percent of those people who were sexually harassing had at least one other kind of aggression as we did it last year.
I think, you know, it's funny because, you know, we do a lot of supposing, and, you know, as you were saying, maybe it's because the fifth grade shouldn't be in middle school. We actually thought, I remember discussing this, but we actually thought that kids, students who were physical aggressors probably were mostly physically aggressive, and that the kids were almost like specialists, you know, like, I'm good at cyber aggression, that's what I'm going to do, and, or I would never be seen pushing or shoving in a hallway, but I can, I am one of the relational aggressors, where I'm going to exclude people from my cafeteria table and those kinds of things. So I think that was an assumption that we were making, that there would be some kids who did one type, but not all the types. And the first round completely debunked that theory, if you will. It said, really, kids who aggress, aggress in lots of different ways, and that that wasn't true. So that's one of the good things about real data is we can't just make up things we think are true, because the data sometimes says, you're wrong.
Yes, reality is wonderful. She punches this out all the time when we're wrong. Okay, the boys are generally more aggressive than girls, except in the relational and in the cyber aggression. So now we're looking at target frequency, and here we only had one significant effect. So this, targets did not report as much perceived decrease in being targeted in the high school as aggressors reported decreasing their aggression. So the, in cyber aggression, we got a significant effect, but nothing in the other ones. We did get a trend of everything moving down, as you can see, but the only one that was significant was the cyber aggression.
Do you think it's because the students realize that there are some legal ramifications to going after people on either the internet or with phone use or whatever, that people can track it, so that it's not he said, she said?
You mean that it's just cyber and that it really doesn't, I think that-
No, I'm saying that you're saying there's a decline in it, and I wonder if it isn't because we make, you know, the public, the news, everything makes it very clear that you can track this.
Right.
So that we, you know, if somebody says you're doing it, it's on their phone.
Yeah, I think you're attributing more intelligence to this.
Well, we learned, if kids are going to do it, just do it. They don't think a lot about the ramifications.
You look at the ramifications of sexting, and, you know, and they just don't think about it.
Until they get caught.
Well, you think, you think given how much is spent in the news, no one would be doing anything more, but-
Yeah, seriously.
The consequences are-
They're impressive, the consequences.
Yes. So here we're now looking at targeted differences, and what we find is that the males are the most targeted in physical aggression. And what's interesting is the males in the high school are targeted physically as much as the middle school males. Which again, you know, some people said, oh, in high school, no males, and really don't have it, it goes away, it's only a middle school thing, doesn't seem to be the case. And not surprisingly, females are significantly more targeted with sexual harassment, that doesn't surprise anyone. And boys and girls are equally likely to be targeted in non-physical, relational, and cyber ways. So the overall results of the high school then, significant decline, but only significant in relational and cyber, there was a decline, but it was only significant in relational and cyber aggression. Most problematic are the males in the high school, they're the most aggressive. Overall decreases in both proactive and reactive aggression accounted for the decline that we found in the relational and the cyber aggression in the high school. For targets, there was a very small, but overall, it was an overall decline, but it only came out significant in cyber targets, and it was a small effect. And males were most frequently the targets of physical aggression and females of sexual harassment. There were no correlates of this change, because the overall effect of the change in the targets was very, very small. Now we're going to look at the characteristics of the bullies. And the way the program works is if a person admits to doing physical, non-physical, or relational target more than once, they're given this subroutine of an aggressor. We're going to look mostly at the targets here, although we'll have some aggressor information in it. Targets are identified by having more than one time on physical, non-physical, or relational targets. Once they get into the subroutine, they're asked a question about identifying their characteristics of their aggressor, and a number of people who go in in that particular time then say, well, no, it really wasn't a real thing, so I'm not going to continue on. So we have, the thirty-eight percent of the middle schoolers who are targets are people who really own being targeted at aggression. And interestingly, it's the same percentage in the high school. Okay? So the first thing is about aggressor type. The first question they're asked is who aggressed? One of the very interesting things about the aggression, if you look at it, is about a third of the incidences are more than one person being a perpetrator at one time. The other thing that's very important about this particular table is that we have ten percent in middle school and twelve point seven percent in high school who are adults who are perceived to be bullies. And so one of the things we want to do in the current survey is to try and track down what's the nature of that aggression. It could be someone outside of the school.
Right. They're answering these questions from anywhere in their life.
Right.
So we don't, we have some areas that we want to say, is this happening during the school days, is it happening after school, is it happening outside of school activities? So we're now ready to sort of even fine-tune it a little bit.
That's a pretty important point.
Yeah, no, that's very important.
Absolutely.
Because I would hate to think it all happens at school.
So, in the first survey, we tried to brainstorm about motivations for aggression. And so for the aggressors, we had a bunch of things that they could give us frequencies on, and these are all the ones that we had identified in the first. It was a joke, I was angry, I wanted revenge, my friends pressured me, no reason, just something to do. And you see, what I've ordered them is by the middle school, that's the frequency going from the most down. The high school is very comparable in the frequencies. We also had write-in questions, and we analyzed the write-in questions to see the things that we had missed. And so we had ones, other person started it, that was a big one, sixty-seven percent and sixty-three percent. Again, students are very nice, they tell us when we don't know what's going on. Did not mean it, fifty-three and forty-six percent. And then the issues around, tried to take boy and girlfriend, and this was comparable in both the middle school and the high school, about twenty percent of the sample. We also asked motivation from targets. We weren't as good with targets. We had three items, thought it was funny, they disliked me, and they were showing they had power. They produced a whole bunch of other ones for us. I have no idea. They wanted to be popular, they were bored, they were jealous, getting back at me, and this interesting one, they liked me, so some, attracting any attention is better than no attention at all. The location of the aggression. So now we're asking, and you'll notice at the bottom here, we have percent of targets, and multiple locations are possible. So what we did here is we broke down the fifth and the sixth graders as different from the seventh and eighth, because it was the belief that they really are different things going on, and indeed that turned out to be true, and then the high schoolers. And what we did is I, we ordered them by the fifth, sixth grade. What you'll notice is that for the highest in the seventh and eighth grade outside of school becomes very much higher. So it's thirty-two point eight percent in the fifth and sixth, and then it jumps, and it kind of either stays steady or moves in the same way into the high school. And as I indicated before, it's also the case that we get this increase in cyber aggression and in cyberspace. And you see that it's really in the seventh and eighth grade that that's first starting, and it maintains a consistency into high school. We did another item that asked people where they were most scared, and this went to the entire group of the sample, so from fifth right through. So now we're not asking targets, where did the incidents occur, but we're asking students in general, where do you feel least safe and most scared? And what's interesting is, the bus was sixth on where the incidents has occurred, but you notice that it turns out to pop up to the top. I again, I again ordered this by, I think I put it now, yeah, I ordered it by the fifth and sixth graders. It's something that's also in the seventh and eighth graders. It declines for the high schools, but the bus is a place where people are afraid. It's also the case that the highest for the high school of places that the entire school is afraid is the band room. We had put the band room in because people had written it in, and so we got this percentage. We'd like to know various things about why the band room has some problems in the high school, and we'll ask questions about that in the survey, just to find out what it is that's going on there.
Or, you know, a lot of these cases, we're asking students, I know Sue's got student groups asking other students to gather data, we have talked about this, so we're actually going to ask the students, like, what do you, why do you think kids answered the survey this way? Can you, I want to go back to the bus for a minute, because that's been, where the incidents took place was just a slide or two earlier?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, so this is really something, I think, if parents are watching at home, that in terms of where any type of aggression's happening, few, very few, or it was sixth down the list of, out of eight or nine things, of where it's actually happening. Because I know there was a lot a few years ago, where the perception was, most everything's happening on the bus, you know, where there's, but in actuality, it's not on the bus where the frequent incidents are happening. But when you get to the next slide, just because few incidents are happening on the bus, kids still feel less safe on the bus probably because of the fact that it's moving, there's one bus driver who's not looking at you, and kids are relatively unsupervised and jostling in the seat, so.
Well, they can't get off until they're stuck there.
They're stuck there.
That's right.
So there are lots of reasons why kids do feel less safe on the bus, but the reassuring thing is, there aren't that many incidents happening on the bus. So I think those are the things we always ask ourselves to try to draw some conclusions based on two data points about what's really happening versus what we think is happening.
Okay, social contact. So this is a very important for intervention slide, that two-thirds of the instances, or about sixty percent, to be more accurate, are done with a witness or a few witnesses or many witnesses. So it's only, it's only a small percent that are no witnesses, and it's the same percent basically in the middle school and the high school, suggesting that one of the ways in which one can deal with it is to get bystanders to stand up and not accept as a community the kind of aggression that's occurring. When we asked them what the bystanders did, fifty-four percent did nothing in the middle school, sixty-six percent in the high school did nothing. Tried to stop, about a third in the middle school, and it went down in the high school. Watched and laughed, it actually went up in the high school slightly from the middle school. So this is an area where an intervention of trying to get people to take responsibility as a community for not egging on aggression is very important. The aftermath of the incidents, and here, who did the person who was targeted tell? And what you see in this particular slide is that the middle schoolers tell the parents and a friend, the high schoolers tend to tell mostly a friend. The other part of this is that if you look down at the bottom here, which is teacher, guidance counselor, principal, or assistant principal, they are not told very frequently. Okay? So they do not go to the authorities within the school. When they asked parent, they were asked what their parents did, the data were quite consistent for both the middle school and the high school. Seventy-five percent gave advice, they listened sympathetically, told to be strong, pep talks. Notice that they didn't call the parents the aggressor, and they didn't go to the principal there either when the aggression was known. So again, the school is being kept out of it as far as the information is concerned. This is a wonderful question, because they're asked now, when you told your parents, what was the effect? Seventy-one percent of the middle school and seventy percent of the high school said that the situation got better, either a little better or significantly better. that the situation got better, either a little better or significantly better. Only five point four percent in the middle school said that it got worse, and only one percent in the high school. So, telling parents is a very good thing for students to do, and that's a message we have to get out to the students. This is the teacher or adults, what did they do? What's interesting is the same ordering of what the parents did. Also interesting is they don't call the parents, and they don't tell the principal either. But they do the same kind of giving advice, listening sympathetically. Now, when you tell the people in authority in the school, what happens? And again, the overwhelming percentage say that it got somewhat or significantly better. Again, students need to know that if they go to the authorities, they have a good chance of having things get better. The only hot, really high one is the middle school is saying that when they told, in the middle school, thirteen percent perceived that it got worse. And I guess that's something we have to think about, what, what it is that happened in that particular situation that would produce that higher percentage of getting.
What's that, I'm sorry, can you go ahead?
No, I was just going to ask, what are we going to do about using that data? Because that seems really critical if we can somehow convey to parents, to students, that if they do go and report this, that, I don't know if you could go back to that other screen, just real quick.
I have a question.
That, you know, that there will be positive consequences. You know?
Feel free to participate, so.
I guess I'm just wondering, moving forward, how you're going to use that data to try to send that message.
Well, I think there are, there are a couple of very strong messages that say what's going wrong and what we can do to fix it. The, I would say, three things. We have targeted areas. We have the issue of bystanders not standing up and protecting the community and seeing aggression as something that is not acceptable within our community and not something that is done and not something that we can, that we can tolerate. We have to also realize that a lot of the aggression is outside of the school, so the school can't do anything. But we have to communicate to the parents the same kind of information.
Yeah, it's almost like a social norms campaign, like they do for drugs or alcohol, like, you know, to, to put the word out there, like, guess what? When you tell, things get better.
Well, also consequences. There's also consequences piece, so that, that there will be consequences.
Well, it's not necessarily that.
What do you mean by consequences?
That there will be an improvement.
Improvement, yes. That's, that's, that's the very important thing, that there are things get better if you tell the authorities. And that's something I think the school has to say, "We know this because we've listened to you, the students, and we found that those of you who have come forward and have talked to counselor, teacher, principal, that things have gotten better."
If you look at. This might be a good point to let Sue, I mean, she's doing a lot with encouraging student leadership in this area, so I know you have a lot to weigh in on, so go right ahead, and then we'll.
And I'm being uncharacteristically quiet.
I know, so I'm, I'm looking like, don't.
Well, before we got the results, which were, came in a very wonderful time, we developed a school climate task force. So, we have seventh and eighth grade students with a teacher leader group who went into classrooms in fifth and sixth grade and then gave a survey, once they saw how difficult it was to get information by hand. In the middle of the fifth and sixth grade data collection, we got a result of this, which I, I shared with the students on the, on the school climate task force. And they thought it was extremely interesting, and that helped them gather their thoughts, and they got information from seventh and eighth grade. They didn't go into every single classroom, but they gave a, a single-page sheet, which went a little more deeply into the questions that we have here. And it, it's remarkably consistent. Over the winter break, we had, I had the secretaries collate the information and put it in data form, and I'm meeting with the school climate task force tomorrow to take what they received from the students, which itemizes some of these areas, so that they can develop the task, the, the strategy that they want to have, and work with the student leaders group and the student council to gather the whole school on the actions that will affect change. Because if we have the individual result that the students understand better and can report better, but what do they do? We have to take the whole community and gather the whole community together to put that power for the whole, over the whole structure, as opposed to the individual, so that's moving it out. You know, it doesn't happen in a day, but as you change, you know, people's attitudes towards wearing seat belts and smoking, et cetera, some of the difficult times that we've all faced in that ten to fourteen age group, where you're trying to figure out who you are, and sometimes you might, one time, be mean to another because you're preserving your own self-esteem. Perhaps we can do away with that and be kinder to each other with our words and our deeds and, you know, get to that zero point of aggression and zero point of, you know, that zero percent of the students are mean to each other or aggress in any form, whether it's relational or, or physical. So, we're looking at the data and taking action on it, refining it, and bringing it to the students, because they're the ones who have to change their community. And I think they're interested in doing that, so.
And they listen to each other when they do that.
I just like to point out one other thing. We started out this meeting with talking about the constitution and active learning and using involvement. This is, this is, this should be a learning experience for them to take data and then to take action on the data to change their community. I mean, what better learning experience could these kids have?
And the kids went from class to class to collect their data, student to student, not driven by adults, and the adults had to vacate. So.
Can you vacate it?
I thought it was fabulous. And.
Wonderful project.
Oh, thank you.
I just have a question, just going back to consequences and telling parents, and things got better, was it because the parents intervened? Or they called the school and alerted them to the problems? Or was it just sitting with them and giving them good advice?
Didn't say that the parents called it. I think that.
If you look at, this is what the teachers did, only fifteen and ten percent actually called the parents, only a quarter went to the principal. So, and, and, and the percent better is much larger than that. So, sixty, seventy percent.
It could be as simple as they're getting strategies and advice from the parent to, to deal with it themselves. We don't know.
I mean, just getting it off your chest.
Oh, absolutely.
Often has a salutary effect. So, there's a lot that's going on in there. I don't know personally whether we can or should delve deeper in this issue. I think that, you know, the kind of action plan that Sue talks about is probably a better strategy than asking more questions.
I think it's great, what they're doing, with the leadership groups in your school.
Plus, I mean, Sue, Sue is the model of the good administrator who's helping the students to solve their problems.
I have no money for you.
That's right.
I only call, call good things when I see them.
All the solutions we brainstorm, they're not really living in our sphere most of the time, even though we think they are. So, the more we can empower the students, the better.
The better, absolutely. Okay, so, we go, this is reasons why they didn't tell, and I think the most telling thing in this one is that high school students, you know, it's not a big deal and not the school's problem. And again, I think that this is the change in the bystander, that we have to communicate to people that aggression is everyone's problem, it is this, it is the school's problem, it is the student's problem, it is our community problem, and we're all in it together to fight this. And so, that has to be an attitude change that occurs. The middle schoolers are more worried about tattling and the parental reaction, which the high schoolers don't seem to have as much. But then again, that's, so, summary of the incident characteristics, motivations for aggression vary. The locus of aggression most frequent is outside of the school. In the school, recess for the middle schoolers and the hall for the middle schools and the high schools are highest, the highest hotspots within the school. Aggressive acts tend to have a substantial number of witnesses. The witnesses in both middle school and high school are likely to do nothing. Middle school targets most likely tell their parents and a friend, whereas in high school, they just tell a friend. And both middle school and high schoolers are less likely to tell school officials, which is something that we have to work on.
Right.
Telling parents and school officials are both perceived to have positive outcomes. That's a really important one. So, the survey appears that be a viable method for monitoring aggression and yielding consistent data. It appears to provide a centric, a sensitive metric for assessing the efficacy of our interventions. The evidence for the caring school community is quite good and was quite reassuring. I didn't necessarily think that the one year was going to have that effect. I was jumping up and down when I analyzed data. My students call me a dataphiliac.
That's all right.
It was, it was, it was wonderful.
There were lots of people in that world.
I was the first to know it, and I was saying, "Oh, my God, it worked."
Yeah, that's really.
It was just, it was very gratifying.
I was pretty happy myself.
Yeah. The biggest test will be whether we can impact the seventh grade spike, and that's coming up during this current year that we're looking at right now, and we'll be telling you about that next year. And it's important to think about ways in which the caring school community can be supported and extended into the middle school. We've, these are just points that we discussed, expanding aspects of the caring school community to the middle school, the bystander interventions, providing an environment in which kids feel comfortable going to school officials, and then making the scary areas less scary. So, we thank you very much for listening to us.
Well, thank you for being so honest. Just any thought of the comments, but I, I think that, you know, very often when, when something comes into the sphere and it's very public and everybody rallies around it, it can be so much else going on that you kind of fall off a little bit, but we have not. So, we're still collecting really good information and plan to continue to, that informs us and allows us to tweak things or start things or create better mechanisms for the support, and will continue to do so. And I think, you know, parents in the community want that reassurance that we are still paying as much attention to this as we did three years ago and, or four years ago, whenever we started, and will continue to do so.
And it's not a stagnant process. You're using this data to delve into other areas to continue to make an impact on this.
This is the first, Foxville is the first time this has ever been done, that we have had an ongoing survey. Nowhere else, anywhere.
No, no other district I know has this type of information.
Anyone, anywhere, nowhere in the world. This is, this is the first, Foxville is the first.
You're so welcome.
Yeah. Thank you for all your time and your effort.
Can I just ask one question? I don't need to hang on the fifth grade incident, but I, fifth graders per se, but, you know, we've always been able to have what I refer to as the neighborhood school system. In other words, whatever part of town you live in, that's where you go to school. And I've always been adamant that we have to make sure that academically each school has what it needs. Do you think part of it is, when you take three schools and you put them in one place, now of a sudden, you've had kids who've been going together since kindergarten through fourth grade, who are now put in an environment in the fifth grade, and all of a sudden, kids that might have been friends with kids find new friends? And I, I should think there'd be a terrible adjustment and a lot of hurt and angst for a lot of these kids, because, you know, small childhood friends that they thought would be their friends for life, or they were attached at the hip, so to speak, and they didn't, they played together, they went to sports together, they did all these things. All of a sudden, they're venturing out and they're finding new friends. And there's going to be a lot of hurt and a lot of, you know, inner anger, I should think. Do you think, does that possibly contribute to some of what goes on in the fifth grade when you take three schools and put them together? Kids who've never been together before.
Again, if we look, we look at the data, the biggest blip up is the seventh grade.
Seventh grade.
So, that's where you're getting the real, I mean, that's, we're coming in now to the seventh grade, and can, can the caring school community kind of knock that seventh grade?
We're actually getting good data for fifth grade, just that, that one little, that one little thing is the only one in a myriad of data points. We're actually getting really good, you know, information that we can feel confident that their needs are being met. But I think any district will tell you, wherever the feeder grade is, there are going to be social adjustments. I can't, can't say their problems or higher incident, just adjustments. You, you're going to a school where, from a school where you knew everybody in your grade level to someplace where you know a third. So, there's always going to be adjustments, but we're getting really good data about how they're transitioning and acclimating to the school. And that's not what we're seeing, and it's, it's in seventh grade, which suggests, because this, the whole middle school's working a lot, suggests, you know, developmental growth factors, where they are in their psychological, social, emotional, physical, chemical health and development.
But I think the concept of they're part of the problem, make them part of the solution is going to, I think, going to be key, by involving them and letting them know what's going on and how you're going to fix it.
That's right.
And that they have the power to do so.
You're all going to have to learn to live to be here together for four years.
There used to be a song, right? You've got the pedal.
Yes. Sue, may I ask you a question? With these student leaders that you're developing this with, do you have a group in the eighth grade and a group in the seventh grade? How do you do with that?
Well, I invited.
Or is it student council?
Yeah, for this task force, I invited every seventh and eighth grader to put their name in, in the guidance office, specifically because I wanted to see who was willing to walk down the stairs and put a piece of paper, not just give it to their homeroom teacher. You had to demonstrate, you know, some willingness to work and some initiative. And I thought, how are we going to sort out from all these applicants who we're going to get? And so, we got a total of six, and we took all six. I originally started, you know, thinking that we would have four, because there were four teachers on the teacher task force and the teacher, teacher leader, the teacher leader group is a group for teachers, but now, working with the students, they become the school climate task force. For the task force, equalling up the number of students, I added Kristin Shank, a guidance counselor, who's our marked community educator, marked trained community educator. So, we have an equal number of students and teachers. So, that's how they got selected. They asked to join, and we accepted all applicants.
Sue, do you have any boys on that task force?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Just thought I would ask.
Are they in seventh grade?
Uh, no, not in seventh grade.
Well, they're all eighth graders.
But the, the student leaders group, the adherent student leader, not the task force, that's fifth through eighth.
The student leaders and student council is fifth through eighth. So, we're taking the smaller group to gather the data, sort it out, and then we'll share it with the larger group. In, we have that twenty minutes, it's recess around lunch, sometimes in inclement weather or rain or snow. It's a perfect time for sharing this information, or the high school musical assemblies, they do one in the winter. So, things like that, we'll share it with them. And the student leaders and student council will be working out. So, we're taking a little group, spreading it out a little more. We have some, you know, wonderfully creative students and teachers, so I'm sure that our marketing campaign will just get those seventh graders by the time you have your, your next survey, I hope.
Bruce, you had a question.
Well, I just wanted to thank the doctors' night for what really is, I think, a ton of information. I also think it's going to be the reaction of our parent community to ask more questions about this and not just say, "Okay, we've got a great report." So, I wonder, Debbie, if there are more things we can do, maybe sort out some of these ideas and take some of the more tactical ones and maybe report back. You know, for example, what are we doing for the seventh grade? And Sue's given us some examples of what she's doing, but I, I'd like to target that group specifically and see what else we can do. In terms of these scary areas that are in the buildings, I'd like to know what our plans could be, what our administrators might think we could do. That, to me, sounds like it's something we might be able to knock off versus, you know, just saying we're going to expand the caring schools community. I know that's a bigger effort, and some of these might be smaller knockoffs that we could do.
Already started some of that.
Yeah, you know, and I'm sure you have. So, I, I think, you know, anticipating what we might hear from the community, and what I'm sure Sue hears regularly, you know, maybe we can just revisit some of the tactical actions and see what we can do as a committee to support some of these that might be a little more actionable initially.
Well, some of the, some of the answers to your questions I have, but I have to meet with the task force tomorrow to go over them, because I think that it's respectful to them to let them know and share what we're going to do, because some of the information that they got on, in their data supports that data. And as the kids know, some of the actions are for the students, and some of them are for the teachers. The teachers have already been apprised of some of the actions that, you know, that they will be taking for some of those areas that are problematic. And I can share that with you later on, but I don't hear that much, because you see that the parents don't tell the administrators. So, but it's, it's something that in the ten to fourteen age group is a challenge, something it was great to see that there has been some effect, getting better. But again, zero is our goal. You know, zero percent aggressors, zero percent targets. So, we have a little ways to get.
Happy to come back at some point and tell you what, what plans have been put in place and what we have learned through either focus. and what we have learned through either focus groups or more probing.
Great.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's the parent of the seventh grader looking forward to next year's survey.
The hour, I can't, I won't even mention the hours of time that.
Oh, no.
That iron.
Can you imagine?
Goes without saying. Can you imagine? It's great. Thank you so much. See you soon.
See you soon, yes, indeed.
And now for our N E S update, Mrs. Vannelli.
Yes, Mrs. Myers-Pacla is ill. Family, I believe, might be down with something out of the flu. She came in this morning and spent some of the time this morning with her. Told her she needs to go home. So, she can't be here tonight. So, but what I, this is pretty simple. You have the letter in your packet that says, based on the review of our N E S report, they have reaccredited our high school, which is fabulous. So, congratulations to everyone at the high school for all their hard work over the last many years preparing. One of the things I did want to point out is that frequently, they will recredit you, but ask for an interim report before the two-year mark. So, there might be some things they were concerned about that they want you to address a little bit quicker and file another report before the two years. And they are not asking us to do that.
Very good.
So, to compliments to the high school and, and the good situation that we're in, thanks to everyone's work here, getting the high school in the great shape it is, and to the previous principal and everyone who worked so hard. We don't have to file any type of interim report. So, as you can see, this letter continues our accreditation in the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. They reiterated a lot of the commendations you heard about at the meeting where Mrs. Myers-Pacla was present, about how many of the programs and services they were impressed with and wished to commend. They also acknowledged many other things that they found in their review, including, at the top of the list, the strong collaborative districted school culture, the extensive and well-supported professional development program, the new Warrior Way program, and lots of other things that, that they noticed, and which includes a lot of things that I think we're proud of, which is a sense of pride throughout the building, students and staff, and all of which results in a positive school culture, climate, and environment. So, they're already working on the particulars for the two-year progress report. And as some lament, N E S never goes away, so you think you just had your, you just got your accreditation, but they're still, they're already in teams addressing. So, it doesn't seem to ever really go away. If you notice on the third page, it lists some highlighted recommendations that we talked about at length when Mrs. Myers-Pacla was here. And the last one, it says to complete the site work to replace the parking areas and the walkways, and some other things they mentioned in the report, like the auditorium lighting. And to your credit, you've addressed it. And so many of those things were already completed within a few months after they left the onsite visit. So, we're in great shape.
Did you make them aware of that?
Yes, yes. We filed a report.
Say what you've already done?
Yeah, so they submit the report, then we file. So, they were thrilled with the progress that was made in such a short period of time. So, thank you for all of that support. So, we're in good shape.
We are definitely in good shape.
Probably see Diana back in a year and a half to two years with the two-year progress report.
I was going to say, or I was going to ask Debbie, is that whose responsibility it is to do the two-year progress reports?
Yes, with all the teams and they're, they're in different groups. And I, I really love the way they do it here, which is whatever standards you worked on in your initial group to prepare for accreditation, you're now addressing a different set of standards. So, everybody gets to mix it up and become familiar with all of the standards in the accreditation process.
Think you should send a copy of that letter framed to Mr. Theodos.
Yes, he does know. Yeah, because we sent him the, the first report for him to review and help us with the response. So, he's, we do hear from him.
Good.
Time to time.
Good.
Yeah, so all is good.
Now, we are moving on to the FY14 budget, continuing the discussion with Mrs. Vannelli and Mr. Yufman.
So, the only thing new we had for you tonight is, as we discussed at the December meeting where we presented the preliminary discussion of the budget, was that as we did last year, you asked for, what are the additional priorities that we would like to keep on the table for committee consideration? You have them there in the memo. Last year at this time, we had a list of four items that were, we called informally the wish lists rather than additional budget priorities. And one of the things, we were able to accomplish three out of the four of the things on the wishlist through one way or another. The one that we didn't last year is now you see back on the top of this list, not just because it was on last year, we actually went through the process again with the administrative team of looking at all the needs in the district and picking the four things that, that we thought would be our next steps if more revenue were to become available in the next month or so. So, or month or two. So, the first thing is that technology integration specialist, which works directly, who works directly with teachers. As you know, we have one, you've met her at this table, Carrie Green. She works at all five schools, I mean, teacher training and integration, use of technology to enhance teaching and learning. So, it would be wonderful if someday we could have two spread across the five schools. We would like a middle school math specialist. We do have one. The changes in the Common Core, you've heard from Amy, and if you want to go back over them again, it'd be great. The changes in the Common Core in mathematics are the greatest of all the areas we're, we're, there are already shifts happening, and over the next couple of years, you'll see more shifts due to the Common Core.
Debbie, I have a question about, if, if we're contemplating these numbers, should they be added to the budget proposal?
Yes.
Because you can always go down, you can't go up. So, whatever we vote on, should these numbers be incorporated in that bottom line?
Yes, that's what the committee did last year.
Okay.
Is that when, last year, during the month of January, revenue, additional revenues did become available from the town. We get the forecast from the town, the situation from the town, finance story. And last year, by the end of January, when you did vote, you added in the elementary math specialist at the, and we added in the exact, and you added in additional $5,000 from the school clubs. So, those two items, you did increase the budget by that amount.
Which is that once we voted on it, then.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
I think the third thing sort of speaks for itself. You have 1.6 assistant principals at the middle school, there are 900 students. You just saw a whole bunch of data that says, there's all kinds of things going on at the middle school with, you know, with incidents that require attention. So, eventually, we would really like to, to get to the point where we have two assistant principals at the middle school, as we do with the high school, two full-time.
Debbie, I should know this, being a parent of middle school students, but remind me, why is it 1.6 as opposed to the two individual?
That's all you've.
But of the two individuals that are there, right? How does that translate to the 1.6?
Mr. Donella is .6.
Okay.
Mr. Crean is full-time.
Okay.
Mr. Donella is a .6 assistant principal.
Does that mean Mr. Donella is only in the building .6?
That's correct.
So, it's not as though he's teaching the other part.
He goes home after lunch.
Okay.
Sometime early afternoon.
Thank you.
Yes. So, that does put, but sometimes it's building coverage after school clubs and activities. Sometimes it's committee work, working with teachers, you know, being available for evaluations. All of that is, and that, that's one of the things we put, that the sheer logistics of providing enough administrators in any district in Massachusetts right now to be able to successfully complete the requirements into the new evaluation system is quite challenging. So, with, they are the largest school, they have the largest staff population, and they have.
And student population.
Ratio-wise, yes, and the largest students. So, ratio-wise, they have proportionately more staff to evaluate and more students to supervise.
I think when, you know, when you do your budget presentation, be it the advisory committee or whatever, I think we need to, I think people have a false impression of what assistant principals do. They don't just walk around the building and keep tabs on kids. They have all these other responsibilities. And I think if we're going to have a strong school system, then we have to have a strong administration that oversees these things, because it's not like when we went to school. And the demands and the expectations on administration are, you can't expect them to be watching the students and still being able to get their jobs done during the day. So, I think we need to, you know, press that issue. People need to understand what these administrators really do do in the course of a day, so that they understand it's not that we want to be top-heavy, or we just want a bunch of administrators running around. I don't think the public understands the ramifications of the people in these positions.
Well, just further to that point, Martha, I mean, for people who haven't been in the school in a while or can't get there, or parents who can't get there, it's amazing what those three individuals do there.
Yeah.
And the size of that campus, the size of that building, the size of that student population. It's somewhat mind-boggling, so I agree.
Well, you know, I look at that, I look at what we need for administration, I look at what we have for issues, and part of me says, we need more guidance councils. We need people who have more one-to-one contact with these kids, because the more familiar the students are with the administrators and the people who are in authority, be it the guidance councils, whatever, the more comfortable they're going to be, Bruce, going to them and telling them what's going on. And it's like anything else, you know? And people always talked about doing away with the, the phys ed department. And I have to tell you, I think most of the kids will consult with the phys ed people. They feel very comfortable with them because they're associated with the sports and probably they're their best ear as far as a student going to somebody sometimes, because they trust them. So, I, I think, you know, trust is a huge issue with the kids, especially in the middle school, and we need to build on that. And, you know, when I look at these problems, I, I can't help but wonder, do we need a bigger guidance council, support system?
Well, we had a middle school, another, we have three middle school guidance councils. We did have a fourth on the list somewhere, but, you know, the list was just big. So, we did as administrative team the prioritization exercise we go through. And while it was on the brainstorm list, it didn't make it into the top four by consensus, but it was on there.
But three good kids for three councils.
It was on there.
That's a lot of students to oversee and try to keep in touch with and, and, you know, make sure that they're okay. And I don't, you know, everybody thinks, oh, guidance. There's a lot to it, and I, I think we need, you know, we need more one-on-one with these kids. Because if we help them in their day-to-day.
So, I wouldn't be surprised if next year's wishlist might have been got. But it doesn't this year, because we said, what do we need most critically? And these are the four things. And similar to your point, at the high school, we, our school psychologist is only a .8 employee.
Oh, really?
And, yes. And, because that's what we.
We budget.
Out of the budget. So, but I, I would say that if you, you know, there's more and more needs with the challenges that are going on in society. There are more and more students who have social, emotional.
And you just can't say at one o'clock, you can't have any issues because he's going home.
Right. And we need more time for assessment of their risk. We have students who are at risk either of something going on with themselves or with others, and we need to do more risk assessments, and that takes time. So, there are, there are a lot of reasons why we need a full-time psychologist at the high school. I'm sure you can just imagine what those might be if more and more kids. So, these really are our top four. If we were to able to address any.
This would be it.
Of these, this would be it.
Debbie, I would just thank you and Bill for putting this together, because we do ask for this recently every year. And I also want to just underscore what you said, which was that, you know, these are wishlist items should additional revenues become available. And I think that's a responsible way to, to say it and to remind the public, because I know after the nice support we got for the turf field, I know there's some question about our spending, what we're doing. And I always like to just reiterate, we're being smart and prudent, and so I, I like how you and Bill frame that. These are not huge cost items to, to an annual budget, the way I see them. And, but they'd be very meaningful, I know, so.
Yes.
We'll continue, I think, to, to be smart in terms of what we ask for, and I think you rephrased it very well.
Appreciate the point. You're right. In the context of our full budget, it's not a lot of money, but we have been responsible about not putting forth every, putting forward everything that we would like, but really what exactly we would need. And we do work very collaboratively with the town. And as it happened last year, we, we put forward a budget and waited for a revenue update. And if they say there are additional revenues available, then it was with that advice that the committee voted in another position last year. So, you know, we'll see what happens. It's early January. And, you know, at the next meeting, we'll be discussing that a little bit further and where you are and whether, like you said, you can't, you can't go up, but you can always go down. So, either we'll have a solid piece of information by the end of the month, as we did last year, that there is the revenue available to do so, or there may not be, in which case you could still choose to do it and reduce later. It's really, there's really a lot of ways to go. But we are very transparent. There's, these, there's lots of things on the list. These are our next things we'd like to see addressed, and in that order is the way we kind of ordered them. And we'll see.
I think if, you know, when you look at the justification and why these things are needed, I think we have to incorporate them into the budget line, and, and these would be the first four that we would probably cut if we had to.
It's not the way to go.
Or make some other concessions, but at least they're there. And, you know, if we don't continue to tell the public and the parents of the kids in the system and the taxpayers what we need to run the school system, then we're not doing our job either. So, I think by putting it out there, they need to see where our thought process is, where we're coming from, what the administration wants, and why we back it as a committee. So, I, I would rather see it incorporated. We can always move it out, but we have to.
I couldn't agree with you more, Martha. Absolutely. I love the way you set this up, the justification. And a wishlist, I mean, I know we kind of coined that term, but it's, it's, it's really based on a very significant justification rationale. So, the wish is, you know, not just pie in the sky wish. This is, these are needs. These are the needs of, you know, that we are, are making recommendations for, for these FTEs to support what we're doing in the district for students.
Makes a better district.
And, you know, it, it's amazing to think, you know, you know, .2 school psychologists can make a huge difference.
Huge.
As everyone knows, the need for, you know, services for children for emotional difficulties is skyrocketing. And, and we need to bring as much attention to that as we can. And the assistant principal at the middle school, again, because the demands.
It is, absolutely.
Actually, I appreciate you bringing up that point, because while we don't want to, you know, focus too much on recent tragedies across the nation, we, we, I think there's been general agreement, based on the Newtown tragedy, that we have to do a better job in society and in school addressing mental health issues.
Why do you need to add that?
And, you know, some, some of the, some of the challenges our students face are, and we do need a lot more in that. So, the bottom two, to address that, and the, the middle school guidance council you mentioned that I did say was on our list, just didn't make it into the top four budget priorities, would be in the same vein, and I wouldn't be surprised to see that in the future either, because we all know how important and critical that is, that they're, they're not, like you said, pie in the sky wishes. These are needs, prioritized needs.
Thank you for doing this.
Were there any other questions? I guess Bill and I wanted to know, we talked for a little bit today. Are there any other budget clarifications from last month's presentation, or any particular areas of the budget that you would like us to come back prepared to address, or?
I think it's pretty broken, Mike.
Yeah, you did a great job.
And we don't seem to need to have another, an extra January meeting at this time.
I think we've spelled it out. We just need to be able to vote on it. But I, I really would like to see those incorporated in the bottom line. Like I said, we can vote on it, we can reduce if we have to, but we can't go up.
Agreed.
Yep. A budget hearing with the AdCom is after you vote. It's two days after you vote. So you vote on a Monday, we go to the other Monday.
I would suggest that the next meeting then, before your vote, I'll bring an update from Randy's side of revenue projections.
We may even invite Randy. I think he may have been here last year, actually.
Okay.
For our vote. Yeah, I think he was. To, I think, because it's nice to know exactly where we are.
Yeah.
We can either bring a report from Randy and Bill can update you or we'll invite Randy and see if, you know.
Just as an FYI, and I think you may have seen it at this point, but, you know, we originally had some estimates that both Randy had produced for the town side, I had produced for the school side, at which point, you know, we thought we would have a balance of about $250,000, you know, in unencumbered funds. But we came in, you know, under our original projected and the town side has come in above it. And as it stands right now, at least the last draft I saw, was that we, that the town is about just under $200,000 in the negative.
Of what they want.
Of what, no, what we need in total to balance the budget.
Okay.
And we were 2 to 250 to the good when we submitted ours. And kudos to Bill because we did come in under the placeholder number we had guesstimated before that. And, but the town has come in above it. So the $200,000 to $250,000 to the good that was in existence when we submitted our budget is now on the flip side. But not because of us, because we saved
Because of what they want.
We saved, you know.
So, I mean, at this point, you know, we're not in a balanced budget situation. So we really won't be capable of increasing, although I get your, I understand your point. So let's get an update at that point.
What do they need? When is the Board of Select meeting to discuss this over? You know, they're going to be discussing their budget, right? Do we have?
Well, the, I know the AdCom is in a process now. We're one of the last ones that they actually meet with in the process. So, you know, once that's all put together, the stuff we have to vote actually before then as well. So, but I'm not sure when their date is at this point.
So while I have the chance, thank the committee and Bill and people who work for him and our payroll, you know, a lot of people have to give us information to put together the budget. But this is my second year, as you know, and the town gives us the budget timeline. And we have, once again, been able to crack away and met all of their, all of their timelines. And I know you will vote at the end of January, and we have, once again, been able to
I can remember when we missed that last.
That's awesome, Debbie.
So I'm very happy with that. And I, I'd be the only department in that situation right now, but it's all good. So I thank you all for the support because it is a monstrous task to put it together. But nothing like a little timeline pressure to get it all done. So I just want to thank everybody because I feel pretty good about that. And you can't, you know, we do it as a team. And I just want to thank everybody who helps. Bill and I do that because it's, and that includes all the principals and department heads who spend a lot of time in the preliminary meetings with Bill. We spend time in the admin meetings talking about budget philosophy and what they need to do for the process. And they also don't miss a beat with their timeline. So, and they didn't have a big timeline this year because we started late with the town side folks. So kudos to them. Short window, still on time. So thanks. Sue is a representation of that group I was just talking about.
Other matters?
Nope. The IGO had a lovely artist in residence there today, lovely gentleman art. I wish I could remember his name right now. But he has a studio in South Boston. He does a lot with a lot of the schools. And he's coming back to paint a mural. And I think the reporter will be there for that. But it was just a wonderful day. I don't know, you saw a different group than I did, but how engaging he was as an artist. That is.
Great. The best part is he's taken the work from the kids. And it becomes representative mural will be the kids' work that he recreates based on what they did in the school. So they'll have a sense of ownership and pride and a little piece of the history over time.
Oh, great.
Tina, the seventh grade band orchestra and chorus concert is Thursday night at 6:30 at the Ahern, if anyone's interested. I know I'll be there. I'm looking forward to it. See Bruce there, too.
My little other is, I, this is an updated new edition of the parliamentary procedure at a glance. So I'm going to leave this copy along with our Roberts rules. And if ever, you know, we, we have chosen for years just to use our guideline as Roberts rules. But there are other parliamentary procedures out there. And if anybody is interested, I could get information from the American Association of Parlamentarians if we wanted to explore one or two other sets of rules or if we're content.
I can honestly tell you, the only years I've been on this board was never once had to open that book. So we must be doing some good.
Very good. Well, and here's our little, brand-new edition of a little
See the English list or we're doing a good job.
And then we have, I think, a little teaching, learning, teaching highlight here. Megan, I don't know if all of you know, she is the senior editor for the yearbook.
Congratulations.
And, oh, she's been working very hard. It's a very and she has just been accepted at her number one school choice for the fall.
Where's her name?
Um, college.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Megan. It's wonderful. And that yearbook, the cover is spectacular.
Oh, yeah, that's why we are classes. It's nothing to do with the way.
I know, but you're the editor. So you're leading a team that is even, even just looking at that, it's like, it's going to be a while. It really is. Congratulations.
I now need a motion and a second and a roll call vote to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiating strategies with non-union personnel, extended day service employees, and to discuss school security. We will not be returning to open session after that. One second. Bruce?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Aye.
Needing adjourned.